I had the wrong microphone turned on. According to my phone, it says it's 5:30. Any objections to us calling this meeting to order? If I don't hear any, let's begin, Ms. Jessica, with a roll call.
Been so long. Commissioner Ames? Commissioner Reagan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Benino? And Commissioner Mayor. And I'm going to encourage you to speak into your mic because I can't hear you normally, so with the mask on, I really can't hear you.
What? You okay here?
Hey.
Well, Ms. Mayor has graciously agreed to lead us in the pledge. So if you would all rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. They moved it on ya, huh? Alright, so we've got minutes in the packet. Next item is approval of those minutes. I hope and trust that you've had a chance to review them. Yes, it really, it's really not... Kristin says no, but I think it is bad form to vote to approve minutes at a meeting you are not at. It's kinda silly. You really don't know what happened.
I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Mr. Benino moves, and Mr. Ames seconds. The approval of those minutes as written?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, three to nothing. Next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is an opportunity for anyone in the crowd. Ma'am, that's you. You are repping for the crowd tonight. This is the crowd's opportunity to speak to us about anything they want that's not on the agenda. Would you like to speak with anything about, to us, about anything that's not on the agenda? Alright, the crowd declines. That portion is closed. Let's move to public hearings. We have a continued public hearing from our last meeting, which is the June 2020 zoning code update. Thanks again, staff, for giving us a little time to review that. That was a large packet. If I remember correctly, if, uh, the fold on my summary sheet is accurate, we left off somewhere around page five of the proposed summary.
Mr. Chairman?
Joe has page six. Maybe I forgot to turn the page. Well, let's just for giggles, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman?
Do you have... Yes, ma'am?
Uh, you might want to consider moving this to the end of the meeting since we have some public hearings with actual applicants here.
That is a great idea. Was there any objection to moving... Uh, Ms. Crowd, what item are you here for? Element seven. Any objection to moving element seven up so that this fine lady, maybe gentleman... Wonderful. So then they can say their piece and we can move on. Any objections to that? Alright, so we'll do that. Uh, we're gonna skip, we're gonna jump ahead to element seven, 924 Fifth Street. A, um, a conditional use permit for cannabis retail, uh, use permit. Ms., uh, what, what staff member? Is that you, Kristin? Savage. Ms. Savage, can you give us a staff report, please, ma'am?
Good evening. So we have a conditional use permit for you, uh, CUP 20-0004 for 924 Fifth Street. And the applicant is Robert DeVito. 924 Fifth Street, element seven cannabis conditional use permit. APNs 001-193-002 and, uh, 001-193-001 for, uh, the parking conditional use permit. Uh, zoning is downtown and, um, the zoning and, um, and downtown commercial. I want to back up just a minute before we go any further and, um, let you know that today I, um, received a copy of an easement agreement, um, between a property owner adjacent to the site where we are going to, um, have the additional parking. And so we realized that they have five parking spaces that, um, have been granted to them. And so, um, we made a change, and you'll see that in red on the piece of paper that I left with you. A change to the resolution with an additional condition that states per an easement agreement recorded on June 8th, 1992, five... Oh, okay, sorry. Um, it's in red. Per an easement agreement recorded on June 8th, 1992, five parking spaces on the southern half of the APN 001-193-003 are for the exclusive use of the adjacent property owner located at 937 Sixth Street, um, APN 001-193-005. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention before we go on, and we'll go into that a little bit more as we go through the presentation, but that is a change to the resolution. Okay, so this morning I received a call from the property owner at, I just read the address, at 937 Sixth Street. And I met them out at the property across the street, and we were looking at the parking lot, and he showed me that they have five spaces that they have received an easement for, have had it for over 20 years. So those spaces basically belong to their property. It does not affect the project in that we were not counting on those spaces. However, we wanted to put it in the resolution so for staff in the future, or anybody in the future, it would be, you know, it'll come up to our attention if somebody did try to do something over top those spaces, it would save us work in the future.
Lisa, could you show that on the map? I really, I...
I'm, I'm gonna get to it. I, I'm gonna get to it completely in depth in my presentation.
Oh, you're gonna show it to us on the map?
Yes, absolutely. I just wanted to bring it to your attention so when I start talking about it, again, as the presentation goes on, you'll understand. Okay?
I got it.
Okay. Can we dim the lights now?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, general location of the project. Zooming in a little closer, there's the project site. And City Hall, where you're sitting right now, just to show you how close you are to the project site, right across the street. This is the actual project fight, site for the CUP for, um, the cannabis use. And the blue is the site for the CUP for parking. And as you can see, the, where you see the, uh, four spaces with the cars parked in them, that's the spot that we're talking about that belongs to the other property. In the, in the blue, in the blue where you see the four cars. Yes, those, yes. No, no. They're, they're basically given to the owner of the adjacent property in perpetuity. It, it's adjacent in that it's behind it. Yes. Across the alley, yes. Sorry. It's, it's...
We have a laser pointer somewhere.
Correct. Um, it doesn't actually affect the project, but we'll get to that. Um, there's the building, um, facing from Fifth Street. Project description. So like we discussed, um, we have two conditional use permits. One is for cannabis, and that's for the actual building, APN 001-193-002, uh, which is gonna be an off-site retail facility. That's gonna be the use of the project. And, um, and the commercial cannabis license will be acted on separately. And then the parking conditional use permit, APN 001-193-002. And that's, um, and both conditional use permits are required for the subject zoning district. Uh, per EMC Code Section 158004, it'll be a physical retail establishment. Cannabis and cannabis products are offered for sale and/or delivery to customers in sealed package containers. No onsite consumption. So if approved, um, the conditional, the cannabis conditional use permit applies to the entire 3,300 square foot parcel. And, um, it goes also along with any future businesses that could move in there, potentially move in there. The parking, and the same goes for the parking additional use permit. It's gonna, um, um, carry for the entire parcel that has parking on it. So safety, um, a couple little things for the conditional use permit regarding cannabis. They're gonna have a licensed security guard, uh, who's gonna be there during the day, prohibit loitering up to, within 50 feet of the property. They'll have a security system with cameras, et cetera, and it'll be monitored 24/7, um, by a local monitoring agency. So as you can see from the side of the building, um, you know, the building could use some improvements. As they do the improvements, it's gonna be a great benefit to this area. Front of the building, um, the area where the public hearing sign is, is, um, gonna be, the landscaping is gonna be updated there. Um, they are gonna have signs, they're gonna have, they're under a separate permit, an administrative permit. A sign over the door with the numbers and the name, and then an element seven sign in the front also. That's the landscaped area. Here's a schematic that, um, was enclosed in your packet, too. Um, we're gonna go over parking first, like we talked about. So first, um, I want to draw your attention to the, um, actually, the two parking spaces right there. So that's two of the three parking spaces that they need to have on the premises, um, for the project. They have two more parallel spots where the arrow is that do not affect the five that belong to the neighboring parcel. And those are their parallel spots. They really only need one of those, but they provided two extra. So accessible path of travel. They have it starting, um, coming off of Fifth Street. And initially, we had it going back down along where they have, you see the big X where the garbage was proposed? They had to move that because that was on the wrong parcel, and obviously, it sits in the middle of those five spots that we just spoke about. Um, so the accessible path of travel now will go, um, you know, down to the entrance of the building right there, and then continue on to the entrance, um, to the garbage enclosure, which is where the red is now.
Handicap space there?
There is a handicap space there, yes. And so they, yes. For both. They have to also have the ability to go into the building, to the handicap space, and to the trash bin. Correct. Yes. Um, the, for the accessible path of travel, it'll, they'll enter in through the back of the building, and also for the employees coming out of the building to go to the trash, they can take that accessible path of travel to the trash bin.
Accessible path of travel is for a handicap, correct?
Correct.
So normal customers would go through the front door?
Would go in the front door.
It's just the handicapped, disabled people?
Absolutely, yes. Correct. So landscaping and garbage enclosure. So this area right there, um, adjacent to the accessible path of travel is also gonna be landscaped. So instead of having the, um, wheel stops, um, they'll put in a landscaped area, and then the curb of the landscaped area will act as the wheel stops. That's where the trash was proposed, um, and then they realize, we realized that it had to go on the property, so they moved it to its present location there, which is taking up two parking spots that they had proposed. However, with the additional two, they still have enough, including having one more. And that takes the garbage out of the way of the five spots that belong to the adjacent owner across the alley. So, uh, the findings are discussed in the staff report, and the required findings can be made for both conditional use permits. The planning commission can approve as presented, or limit an element of the business's operations, or limit the use to a specific portion of the building.
Okay. Did we have any, anything else before we start quizzing you with questions?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners for staff?
Have a delivery element to this, uh, biz?
Yes.
Are they going for a delivery license, too?
It, it's part of the, um, the onsite license. Correct, Rob?
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we open up a public hearing?
When you were referring to moving areas around, did they, did they buy an additional area from someone? How, how can you move areas around? How did they get access to that?
The adjacent parcel is going to be owned by the new owners once they purchase the property. So all of the conditional use permit is being done in advance of the purchase of the property, but they will own both pieces. The piece that the actual cannabis site sits on and the piece that the pro, that the, um, parking will sit on. Although they own the piece that the parking sits on, it has an easement on it for five parking spaces, like we discussed. And we felt, like I said, we found out about that today, and so now we're just, you know, bringing it to your attention that that is gonna be a condition of the resolution. Did I answer your question?
Well, it answered, and created another question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm still not clear. This guy appeared and said, "I wanna give you, I'll let you have these five parking, three parking." But you brought up the, the red, the red.
No. So, so, um, actually, yesterday, I mean, Friday late afternoon, I received a call from somebody from the Poovy Law Firm, which is across the street. The Poovy Law Firm, which is the APN that we are discussing. Yes, correct. And he asked if, he brought up the fact that they have an easement for five spaces and wanted to bring it to our attention. We discussed it on the phone, and then I walked over and met him today and looked at it. Um, it made sense to me. Um, he presented me with a copy of the agreement so that I could verify it. And, um, I showed him where the other two, um, parallel spaces will be that they are going to retain because it is gonna be their property after all. It's just their property, and somebody else has an easement over top. Um, so, um, went over everything with him, how the project's gonna look, how the parking's gonna work, and the, um, law firm, the Poovy Law Firm, was okay with it, based on what the representative said. He's one of the two attorneys that work there. And so that's when we changed the resolution to make sure that that was in writing.
And, uh, the grassy parking area, uh, for the insurance company or whatever it is, uh, next door, they're not gonna be using that anymore?
That, that doesn't, that doesn't belong to them. That entire, I'm gonna flip back.
Yeah. Yeah, I've noticed that there are some of the people that work there park on that grassy area. They're not gonna be able to use their parking anymore.
It's not their, let's see, I'm trying to get back to the... So are you, are you...
That grassy area there is where they're parking.
Yes.
So that's, they're not gonna be able to use that.
That, that belong, that parcel is going to belong to the...
Well, no, the parcel ends at the, at the building edge. That, they were parking on the grass. So in other words, they're not gonna be able to use the grass to park anymore. Is that correct?
That, the only...
Hang on.
The white car? No, no, they park forward of where the white car is.
So the, the only way that they would be able to continue to use the grassy area is if they also had an easement over this property. And to our knowledge, they don't.
They're out of luck for parking on the grass.
Yep, that would be correct.
The only way they could access, so the corner lot, the insurance company, the only way they can legally access that grassy area anyway with an automobile is to drive it across the blue outlined property.
Correct, correct.
So, uh, unless there's an easement for ingress or egress there, they have no right to drive a car over there.
And that's correct. I think the only, um, other, you know, the only other people who have an option to drive in and out and also park is, are, is the Poovy Law Firm. And even if the Poovy Law Firm changed hands, um, that would carry on with it, and they would still have the five parking spaces unless, for some reason, they decided to, you know, give them up, sell them back, whatever.
Alright, any other questions for staff before we open our public hearing? I see you reaching for your mic.
That's my understanding, correct. And, and like we said, the applicants are here, so, you know, you'll have a chance to ask them questions, too.
And that's, that's not uncommon. It's, it's not uncommon for, um, permits to be approved as a condition of escrow, so... Alright, no other questions for staff? So at this point, we'll open up a public hearing. So a public hearing is an opportunity for the public to speak on, um, you know, speak on this particular item. Our public has tripled. It's great to see everyone here. It's our custom to let the applicant speak first on behalf of the project. And, uh, we try to limit everybody to three minutes. Uh, Ms. Jessica will run our little handy dandy timer up there. There's two lights that'll go off. One is the yellow one, that's your 30-second warning. Uh, the red one is, is when, um, I'll start, you know, making, uh, grunting noises with my throat to get you to stop. Would you like to go first? Oh, also, if you would state your name and city of residence, just so we know you're not a robot.
Hi, uh, Christopher Bloom. Um, yes, technically, my city residence would be Los Angeles, but I'm on the road quite a bit, uh, traveling around. We got, um, many projects throughout the state, um, locally in this area. Um, we're going through the state licenses, we're talking about the, now, in the O'Dell, um, as well as the, uh, we're starting to build out in Fort Bragg.
Oh. Some... So if I may pardon you for that, you're Chris Bloom from LA, but you're working on behalf of the project?
Yes, I'm, I'm with Element Seven. I'm, I'm the project officer.
Okay, thanks.
Um, and so we do have some, some other, uh, local operations, uh, around the area as well. Um, to answer your question, Meredith, um, yeah, the, what we're gonna do is we're gonna close escrow pending the CUP approval. Um, once that is the case, we close escrow, we then have the, the right to occupy, and we'll go through the state process at that point. Um, beyond that, I, I really think this is, uh, probably one of the more straightforward ones we've done. I'm happy to any, any, answer any other questions that come up. Um, but, uh, we look forward to, to being a valuable member of the Eureka, um, business community. So thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you for coming up. Would anyone else like to speak about this particular item?
Good evening. I am Jennifer Henson here, representing Element Seven. Thank you. That's handy. Uh, I do run a little shop in Arcata right now, and I'm excited to be involved with Element Seven and helping them with their operations up here on the North Coast. Got a really good grasp on what the community really wants in expanding the cannabis, um, availability downtown, and I look forward to being a part of this project and working with the City Eureka. Thanks, guys.
Alright, thanks. Last chance. We could, we could make it 100% uh, crowd participation. No? Thanks. Alright, we'll return the item back to the commission for, uh, motion and discussion and vote, hopefully. What's the, anyone feeling froggy? Like to jump? No ballgame on later tonight. Motivation seems to be low, Kristin. Fine. I will move the planning commission adopter, you're too late, too slow, Rich, sorry. I move the planning commission adopt a resolution to conditionally approve the element seven cannabis retail onsite at 924 Fifth Street in the Downtown Zone District with the added condition seven that we were given earlier today. You're making, still too slow, Rich. You could've seconded it. Ms. Mayor beat you to it. That's a first and a second. We have a motion. Any discussion about this motion? It takes three of us to pass something. So, uh, let's do a voice vote. All those in favor of this motion say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed, say no. There are no noes. The motion passes unanimously, four to nothing. Congratulations. Thank you. The real estate company next door is really, really nice, good people. You're gonna get great service. Drop in and see us, drop in and see them sometimes.
And he'll give you his card on the way out.
Let that slip there. What's, um... So, uh, madam in the white sweater, we have an agenda. One item on there is incredibly long, potentially. We'd be happy to let you sit through it if you'd like, or if you would prefer, you can pick the next item we address. Are you here for anything in particular? Sorry? The what?
Livingston Patel.
Oh, 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 yes. Alright, so with that in mind, in deference to our, uh, our, uh, crowd participation, we will call the Livingston Patel Lot Line Adjustment. I thought you said Livingston Hotel. The, I don't remember a hotel on our agenda, um, night.
So good evening, commissioners. So before you this evening is a public hearing for the Livingston Patel Lot Line Adjustment. So the parcel number for the project is 007-011-003. It's located at 2136 Broadway, also known as Harbor Lanes. The zoning on the parcel is CS Service Commercial, commercials, excuse me, and the, uh, land use designation is General Service Commercial. So we're over here on the westerly side of Eureka, uh, zooming in a little bit closer here, near Humboldt Waste Management Authority. Zooming in even closer. And we're looking at this parcel right here. This is, um, the view from Broadway, looking west. And this is looking south from around the corner on Hawthorne Street. So currently, there's two lots. They're approximately 2.29 acres. Uh, one of them is .74 acres, and the other one is 1.55 acres. They're proposing to move this lot line up to here.
That was fancy.
Wasn't it, though?
Great work. Great work.
And they'll, they'll create two new lots. One is .68 acres, and the other one is 1.61 acres. Do you like that one?
You are rocking.
So when, um, lot line adjustments are acted upon, there is a 15-day, uh, period during which anybody can appeal, or, well, not appeal, excuse me, can request a public hearing. Um, this lot line adjustment... Um, this lot line adjustment was approved on June third and on June fif- June eighteenth, we received a request for a public hearing. We corresponded with the person making the request and, um, learned that the concern was that there was a, um, what they believed was a seasonal wetland located on the Chamber property and that's inside that oval there. Since the parcel that's involved in the lot line adjustment is here and the Chamber property is here with the seasonal wetland located roughly there. Looking like that. We went ahead and, uh, discussed it internally and actually what's there is not a seasonal wetland. It's actually a demonstration rain garden that was created in collaboration between the City of Eureka and Keep Eureka Beautiful. So it does kinda look like a, a wetland, but it's not actually a wetland. So based on the fact that the suspected wetland, which isn't a wetland, isn't located on the property that's involved in the lot line adjustment, staff is recommending that you go ahead and adopt a resolution and approve the lot line adjustment for twenty-one thirty-six Broadway.
Any, any questions for staff? I do. Um, if, since the wetland wasn't on the subject property, why?
Just to be clear, for the record, it's not a wetland. It's a rain garden.
Right.
Yeah, the, the person who made the request, uh, continued to request that there be a public hearing even though it wasn't impacting the, uh, parcels where the lot line adjustment was occurring.
So basically, anyone in the city could request a hearing for any reason whatsoever? There's no, there's no, uh, requirement that the hearing have any kind of grounds or anything?
Any property owner or any aggrieved person.
Right.
And you could be an aggrieved person by the mere fact that you're located within three hundred feet of the parcel.
Sure. Or if someone that has a weird psychotic desire to see a bowling, um, alley cut in half and they wanna, you know, it's, any reason.
You said this was a, the demonstration rain garden was something between Keep Eureka Beautiful and the city?
Correct.
And that was about, that was about fifteen years ago, right?
I don't know when that was created.
Any other questions for staff? You guys speaking to that mic there, Rich, they can't hear ya.
Was the, uh, the, the building, the, the, uh, property, wh- where the non-wetlands is located? Did, did Patel buy that also, isn't, didn't, and was going to, that's the Chamber, old Chamber building?
Correct. I don't believe that the Patels, uh, currently own that. Um, I think that there is a, um-
A hotel they wanna build?
Potentially, yeah.
So the Patels are gonna own that whole section?
The Patels will own, um, the newly created parcel to the north. They're purchasing that from the Livingstons who own Harbor Lanes. And then, um, they are going through a process, working with the city under a, um, disposition and development agreement, uh, to obtain the Chamber property.
All right, any other questions for staff? On a theoretical basis, it, uh, the report did make me think. If I were to voluntarily, of my own free volition, uh, plant a wetlands themed landscaping on my property, I know Coastal Commission Californians, we love our wetlands. Would that be subject to some kind of, of, uh, um, review? Should I decide to change it and go to a desert style landscaping shortly thereafter?
Uh, potentially, yes. So if you actually develop something as a wetland, then if it has at least one wetland characteristic, it would become a wetland. This one was not, was specifically not developed as a wetland, it is a rain garden.
I, I, I appreciate that. Uh, I'm, and I'm just speaking purely hypothetical. Um, it seems to me, is that our law or is that county law or is that state law?
It's a- It's city law and state law. The, um, the Coastal Act talks about wetlands, provides parameters.
And the coastal, um, um, and the coastal land, what is it called, Coast, Coastal Commission Zone? Or, or is, is it just in the Coastal Com- Commission Zone or is it all over the city?
Wetlands are usually only a concern in the coastal zone, um, from a city standpoint. Sometimes wetlands are a concern for Army Corps of Engineers or for fish and wildlife in other locations. But they're a important issue in the coastal zone.
Well, that's, I'm, I'm kinda scratching my head thinking, if that's the case, there's not a property owner in his right mind that would ever consider planting a wetlands garden. And if we really love our wetlands and we want to see more of them, you know, coercing people to keep them once they planted them is kinda counterproductive. If the city changed its law, would the state law still apply?
Yes.
There's really no point in the city changing its law.
No.
If I wanted to plant a coastal wetlands and not be obligated to keep it there in perpetuity, I might would have to approach the state government.
You would have to approach your design and your development a little bit differently.
Have to call it a rain garden or something like that, huh? Yeah, okay. Thanks for humoring my theoretical questions. Any other questions for staff while we're here learning new things? All right, so at that point, we'll open up a public, uh, hearing. Um, yes, come forward and if you wouldn't mind, state your name and city residence and share with us your concern.
Gina Lager, Fortuna resident.
I can't quite hear you. It's on. I hear it clicking, I just can't hear you.
Gina Lager, Fortuna resident. Uh, owner of, um, property on Broadway. Um, so, I thought of that too. Your question, I went, wow, do I wanna do this? So let me-
She's pointing at me. Don't take my glory. I had the idea.
Excuse me, my two minutes. I appealed this action to avoid appeal of a May coastal development permit. Um, I had called with questions and-
Excuse me, could you pull your microphone down towards your-
That help? This help? Or should I put it on?
I'd probably take the mask off.
Okay.
If, if you're comfortable with that, we could hear you better.
As long as everybody's six feet away. I had called with questions and believed I re- would receive a, a call during the hearing. I did not. I didn't hear anything. Next thing I hear, it's, this is happening. Um, both the notice and the revised staff report for the May hearing said that the applicants are proposing to adjust the lot line between the former Chamber of Commerce and the, of the property. When my husband and I did two lot line adjustments, that meant the lot line moved or did something different. And this didn't. It didn't change the lot line there. It was still a flat between two different parcels, da da da. Um, however, um, da da da, da da da. However, the report, the, um, report also said that ultimately the vacant unimproved portion of the bowling alley property will become part of the former Chamber of Commerce property. And I went, whoa, whoa, why did they change it? Why are they doing anything different? And then I thought, whoa, there's a wetlands there. And there's wetlands right across the street and down a little ways, so it makes perfect sense that they may have been wetlands. I also found out, not from staff, they didn't return, ask, answer the question, they only put it in their report, but I found out from, um, Mr. Smullen that in, I think nineteen, twenty thirteen, um, the city made them repay the parking lot and then they put in what he called a park. Um, either, rain garden is fine, rain garden is a stormwater project. They're in the coastal, they're right near wetlands. It's a, rain garden is fine with me.
That's your thirty second warning, don't worry about it.
Okay, so, also in that revised staff report, it said, the northerly, na na da da, the northerly portion of the bowling alley property is located within the categorical exclusionary and exempt from coastal development permit requirements. I went, whoa, wait a second, is that true, da da da? Then I got an email from staff saying that the future development on the Chamber property will require coastal development permit. So it's like, okay, which is true. They both require coastal, and I want the, uh, developer to know that. That this is, he's in the coastal zone, he's getting property, it's in the coastal zone. It does, it's Broadway there, there's nothing, they're in that area. This is a rain garden, that is a stormwater project. Coastal, the city's coastal, the general plan, both talk about stormwater and-
They'll have to sort that out when they-
They'll need to sort it out. But I do not want to either delay it-
Yeah.
-by going through the Coastal Commission or, um, I just didn't wanna delay it. But I didn't want to just set it and let it go.
Right.
The developer needs to know.
Thank you for coming forward, we appreciate it.
There's one other thing.
Okay, your three minutes is up, so if you can be quick.
Okay, I will be very brief.
Okay.
There, I have property, I just said re- inherited property on Broadway. And I know that there's future plans to do things on Broadway. I've read a report from Caltrans. Their concern is with that center left lane. And if I was the owner of the bowling alley, I would be very concerned about losing access to Hawthorne. Because they may have some problems in the future with left-hand turn lanes. So I just wanted to also, if I was the person that owned the bow- bowling alley property, I would, I would really appreciate if somebody talked to me about that. And hopefully the two neighbors can work it out.
Yep.
Both the stormwater issues and the access issue. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming up and sharing those concerns. Well, are you open? You don't have to answer his questions if you don't want.
I don't know if I'll answer.
No, you have to put your mask on.
Okay.
What are you saying?
What am I saying?
Yeah.
I'm saying that-
Don't take that personal. I got it. Okay.
I, I'm saying that there has been some confusion, that it's a complicated situation anytime you have the Coastal Commission involved. It's a complicated problem when you have a fruit, a highway going by you. And it's a complicated situation and the staff is trying to help this project go forward. It's city property, you wanna see it develop, they wanna develop it. And the easiest way to do it is to just take one thing at a time and go da 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 da. And I'm just saying that unfortunately, one of the first things that should be dealt with is all the problems, you know? And this is a, this is a potential issue. And it can be a problem or it can be an asset. A rain garden is a beautiful, wonderful thing. And it's needed and it can a- add to their property and that's what I'm saying. And I just didn't want it to be, I didn't wanna leave it a chance that it would, it would, it wouldn't come up at the end of the game and then it becomes the problem because they've done all this work.
Thank you so much. All right, so we'll return this item back to the commission for motion, discussion, and a vote.
I don't have any, uh, objections to this. I would move that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the lot line adjustment at two one three six Broadway, APN zero zero seven, zero one one, zero zero three. I second.
Joe moved, Rich seconded to do that right there on the board. Any discussion? All those in favor say, um, yes.
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 All those in favor say, or all those against it, say no. Four yeses, zero noes, item passes unanimously. All right, next item on our agenda. Thank you for coming in and sharing your concerns. Uh, next item, I seem to have, and all the shuffling of papers, there's my agenda. Next item. So let's go back to the, um, uh, the continued public hearing about the, well, I missed the minutes, the zoning code, yes.
If, Mr. Chairman?
Surplus thing first.
Yeah.
Sure, we can do the surplus thing first. Do you object, Ms. Mayor? All right. Who's doing the, uh, report, staff report for our surplus thing? Surplus property sale of a portion of twelve oh six West Fourteenth Street.
Good evening again. So today, this evening, we have surplus property sale, uh, located at twelve oh six West Fourteenth Street. It's a vacated street of, uh, city property. It's a Bayside Terminus of Fourteenth Street and the APN is, um, zero zero three, zero eight two, zero zero six. Um, the zoning and general plan designation, coastal dependent industrial and coastal dependent industrial, MC and CDI. General location. Zooming in a little closer. A little closer. The APN map with the location. There's West Fourteenth Street. And there's the terminus that we were speaking of, which is the piece that we are surplusing. So the project description, it's the disposition of property located at, like we discussed, twelve oh six West Fourteenth Street. It's, uh, point six of an acre. The parcel is asphalt capped and unimproved and by unimproved, we mean it, um, does not have any structures on it. Property is, is owned in fee by the city. It was formerly a paper street. However, it was vacated by the city in December of nineteen sixty-four and was inadvertently never surplus. So we are catching up with ourselves at this point. Um, it's part of a larger project that was submitted by, um, Eureka Forest Products and I believe also, um, in conjunction with PG&E. It includes, um, a lot line adjustment, a merger, and a coastal development permit also. Um, the city has to comply with the Surplus Land Act to comply, to declare the property exempt surplus property. Uh, have to follow the city's policy and procedures for the sale of city-owned real property. So backing up a little bit, um, per California Government Code, Section five four, two two one, F one E, we are going to, um, consider this prop- property exempt surplus property. So for that, you have to, um, it has to be a former street and it has to be conveyed to an owner of the adjacent property. And so since this parcel is surrounded on three sides by Eureka Forest Products and on one side by, um, Waterfront Drive, it, there is no choice but for it to go to Eureka Forest Products. Property is not needed for city public use. Um, the property at this time and, you know, has in the past, provides vehicular access to the Eureka Forest Products property. The best use of the property is continued use by Eureka Forest Products for their operation. And in fact, Eureka Forest Products leases the adjacent tidelands from the city, so there is an added benefit that they get to utilize the property in per- in perpetuity through owning it. City-owned Eureka policies and procedures for the sale of city-owned property is one of the development standards and Government Code six five four zero two. So public use, um, there's no city public project identified. The property has not been used by the City of Eureka for a public purpose. The property is not needed for City of Eureka public purpose in the future. The property is not needed for city of Eureka public purpose in the future. Adequate size and shape for development in the, uh, coastal dependent industrial zone. It, um, it's asphalt capped and has no structures, like we discussed, it's point six acres. There's no minimum parcel size for properties in the MC Zone District, so it is of adequate size and shape for development.
But are there any setbacks in that zone?
No.
The theoretically, someone could build a long, skinny building on it. But why would they want to do that?
Theoretically, a guy could buy the property and sell it back to, for the forest products, and sell it to, I think, to the property.
He's thinking, maybe we should let her finish her report.
That's kind of the purpose of us going through this.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
So conformity with the adopted general plan, uh, general plan designation for the subject property is coastal dependent industrial. Um, to reserve and protect land adjacent to Humboldt Bay for coastal dependent industrial use, which is what they're using it for. Encourage, um, industrial uses related to shipping or the fishing industry. And it's shipping, or trees and shipping. Staff has reviewed the adopted general plan and finds that it is silent with regard to the necessity of retaining the subject property for public use. Staff recommendation.
And if I, if I read the report, will the city, we're going to sell it? The, the proposal, not that we're approving this, but the proposal is to sell it to, uh, the, the neighbors, uh, at a, um, price that's determined, the fair market value by an appraiser.
That's correct. And, and once it's, once it goes through, once it's moved from you to city council, um, that'll be part of the recommendation to city council. And we do have an appraiser hired, no good.
Any other questions for staff?
I just wanted to be clear, so this is exempt from the normal thing where you'd put it up for anybody can buy it. So this is just-
Correct.
Only one single, single purchaser is-
Yes, and it's also exempt from, um, sending out the letters to public agencies to purchase it in advance of putting it on the market.
Okay, that's, I just, so, okay, so it's just, there's one buyer only being considered here.
Yes, correct.
I, I have a question that's sort of off the subject, which I often do. But what was the orig- for old timers here, what was the original guy's name that owned that forest product?
Gwinup.
Gwinup, thank you very much.
They still own it.
If you ask a question, we could make it a hundred percent participation on this item. Yes!
A paper street is just a designation for, um, something that's on paper as a street for potential, you know, development in the future, but never was developed.
Yeah, if you want to have some fun, pull up a map of Fieldbrook, pull up a parcel map of Fieldbrook. Cause there are a shocking number of paper streets on the map in Fieldbrook. And you go and you look at a satellite photo and there, nothing there, but paper streets all over the place.
One other question, um, is there any city infrastructure under that section, like sewers or anything like that?
Uh, there is, and I don't know if Kristen has additional information about it. The easements, they're working on that between Public Works and, um, Eureka Forest Products to retain any easements that need to be retained.
Yep. Okay, so, um, we can open a public hearing, but the public has left. Public has left the building. So we opened a public hearing, but there was no public to be heard, so we are closing the public hearing. And, uh, returning the item back to the commission for a motion and discussion and vote. I've moved once, Joe's moved once, come on, one of you other slackers.
I moved the planning commission adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Eureka recommending the city council determine a portion of the property located at twelve oh six West Fourteenth Street. APN zero zero three zero eight two zero zero six is an exempt surplus land.
All right, Rich, you need to get your name in the minutes, will you second that motion?
No, I, I'm just not going to get my name in the minute.
I'll second.
Joe seconded. Meredith moved, Joe seconded, Rich stonewalled, we have a motion now, any discussion? All those in favor of this motion say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, unanimous, uh, approval of the motion. Now can we go back to the zoning ordinance update?
Thank you.
All right. So Joe says we left off at the top of page six. Uh, Mrs. Mayor, I was going to defer to you, I don't think you were here when we were on this before. Did you have anything before page six that you wanted to bring up? Okay. All right. So it's, um, something big like this, we could flop around if we wanted to. What I'm going to recommend is that we, uh, look at the summary of proposed zoning code update. This one, it goes sideways, and turn to page six at the bottom. At the bottom, it says page six, and then at the top, you can scan through there and see if there's anything you have questions about, want to discuss. I have a little note on the side that says, um, love the pictures. The pictures on all the signs, all the different kinds of signs and what they mean, those are really cool pictures. Rob, who did that? Give them a gold star.
Probably the consultant that put the zoning code together.
Give them a co- a gold star, those are delightful. Page six, once, twice. Let's move to page seven. Any concerns or thoughts about page seven? Okay, could you give us a dock page number on the left so we can go with you?
Three four zero dash two on the left, what, oh, one, yeah.
Three four zero dash two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, what, maybe it was in the signage thing, something about the signage was going from four square feet to two square feet. Uh, is that in that, I don't remember if that was in that particular thing, but it had to do with the residential lodging places. And I was wondering why, why the signs were being limited to two fo- square feet instead of four square feet.
Yeah, I don't even, I didn't even see that, Joe, I'm not-
And you thought that was in the residential lodging section or in the sign section?
Uh, it might have been in the sign section. I don't remember where it was, but... But I was going to say, uh, uh, that it should remain at four square feet maximum, because, uh, four, two square foot sign really can't be seen. Um, if you're running a, say, a bed and breakfast or something like that. I mean, it's two square feet fine for a vacation rental, but, uh, four square feet is definitely, uh, more standard for a, uh, for a sign for that type of lodging. Where you get breakfast with it.
Kristen, does that ring a bell?
So it's currently two square feet in the zoning code, we were not proposing to change that.
Yeah. So we're doing an update, we could propose that now.
Right, it goes along with the home occupation permit, which is also two square feet. The idea is not that they're advertising, it's just a little placard so that people know when to get there.
I'm sympathetic, the point is, we've, we've converted bed and breakfast now, basically to, to, um, they're in the, they're under the, um, vacation rental section. So, and it is, that is awfully small for bed and breakfast.
Commercial lodging too.
Sorry?
Bed and breakfast are also commercial lodging.
Depends on which zone they're in, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, um-
I, I, I just wanted to allow four square feet, um-
I'll, I'll second that motion. Any discussion on that? How would we differentiate a bed and breakfast versus a plain old vacation rental?
Well, I was just going to say, just four square feet for everybody. You know, it would be up to the, uh, you know, a lot of people don't want four square feet anymore, but those that do, it is, uh, you know, a case in point would be the, 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 uh, daily end, you know, their signs, four square feet.
To change it.
And that's now vacation rental, so, um, uh, but it's a beautiful sign, and, and like I said, that's, uh-
I'll second that, any other discussion on that? So the motion is, and the zoning update to change the, the sign limit from two square feet to four square feet for vacation rental properties. Any other thoughts? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, anything else on page six? Let's move to page seven. Trying to get my six hundred page doohickey caught up to where I am. On item number three forty dash twenty-six, sandwich board signs clarified where they were allowed. It mentions, uh, uh, they're, they're allowed only in mixed-use zones. Without having to dive back in, is mixed-use zone defined somewhere as a technical term? Or is that just any zone that has multiple uses?
Mixed-use zones are, um, like hospital, medical, office, residential, uh, Wabash Avenue, Henderson Center, downtown commercial, downtown west.
So it's any zone where you have multiple uses. So it can't be a zone that's strictly residential, can't be a zone that's strictly-
Industrial.
Industrial.
Or, uh, resource-related public.
Or a zone that's multifamily. It's got to have some type of mixed uses, it's not a, it's not a zone that has multiple zones, it's a zone that has mixed use.
Mixed-use zones are, basically, they're commercial zones.
All right. Any other questions from page seven? Go on to page eight.
Uh, once again, uh, this, at the top of page eight, the, um, four oh six, four oh eight dash seven, uh, about revising the, uh, notice process. I, you know, it says three hundred feet and, uh, to the property owners. I have made this, um, motion before that that be extended to five hundred feet, and include, uh, the people living in the properties or using the properties as a business. Because I, I, I don't think it's fair to have a hearing that the, uh, people who live in the property don't know about. Uh, it's one thing to notify the owner, the owner might live in Phoenix, but, um, but the renters, uh, you know, lots of times, this kind of stuff goes down, uh, kind of goes back to, um, talking to a lot of people, uh, walking precincts and a lot of the people in Eureka rent, and things go on, and all of a sudden, there's something happening across the street from them, down the street, they don't know about, because the owner didn't inform them that, uh, there was a hearing, and it's, it kind of disenfranchises the, uh, the residents who rent in Eureka. So my recommendation would be to, uh, change that to five hundred feet and make it so that, uh, the renters also get a letter.
I'll, I'll second that for the purpose of discussion. So I'm much more inclined to say yes to renters, I'm less inclined to say yes to five hundred feet. Five hundred feet's a long way in an urban area, three hundred feet's, uh, that's a hundred yards, that's a football field. Standard city block is?
Two hundred and twenty.
So fu- two hundred and twenty-
Feet.
Approximately feet, so five hundred feet is, I mean, that's a, if you, if you do it from the outside property line, that's-
You get the block you're in, the block next to it, and part of a little-
Yeah, so I mean, as you're talking about nine, ten, twelve city blocks, parts of nine or ten, twelve, I mean, that's a long way.
Well, I, I, okay, well, I'm flexible on the footage, but, uh, the things should go to the renters also, and, and, and also, you know, businesses that are in those properties.
You accept a friendly amendment than the three hundred feet, but, but, but my tenants-
I'll scratch the part about five hundred feet, uh, just make it three hundred feet, but the notices should go to the renters also.
How big of a deal would that be to notice tenants?
It's a huge job.
Tell us why.
Because, because we don't easily have the information on who the tenants are, what the tenants' addresses are.
Hang on, let her finish, let her finish, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part.
We don't have a, a, a good list of who the tenants are, what their actual addresses are. Um, we have situs addresses, so the parcel has an address that's assigned to it by the building department, and that's the address that, uh, we send the notice to. Um, and also to the property owners. In order for us to get the information out to the tenants, I have to go into the computer system and set up every single one of them as a record in the computer system. And the only way that I can find that information is I use Pulp directories, I use Samborn maps, I use building files, I use Google, and it's time-consuming, it's costly. And I don't know that we actually get very many more participants because we've done that.
It would, I'm sorry, Joe, you were going to ask something.
So to be clear, you're saying you do already send notices to the ad- the parcel address? So whatever tenant is living there, you would assume is going to get that mail?
And that works, except for when there's multiple tenant, tenants, yes.
So like an apartment building or-
Correct.
And you can't send it to A, B, C, D, and E, N, F?
But we don't even know on a lot of them, whether it's A, B, C, D, one, two, three, or even in some instances, how many it is.
Okay.
Did I hear you say, pardon me just a minute, just clar- clarifying, did I hear you say that you already send one to the site address and one to the address of the owner, if they're different?
We send, in the inland portion, we send one to the property owner. In the coastal zone, we send it to the site address too.
Okay, Rich, had a question.
See, I could see, uh, where it would really get complicated, uh, i- if we followed, send it to the renters. Uh, i- 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 if you started applying it to a, an apartment. Cause, uh, you could have an apartment with twenty or thirty people in it, or ten or fifteen apartments. That we, you would have no way of knowing who the people are.
You don't need to know them, you just send them to the address, and just say occupant.
Yeah, occupant, right.
Easy, I mean, I understand that you have to dig out how many, whether it's A, B, C, D, or one, two, three, four, but you just address it to occupant, and-
Yeah, but, but you wouldn't know that they're even renters.
Well, I don't know if they're renters, but, but there's somebody in that unit, and so they're going to get the mail, and they need to know also. That's my, it's been this whole thing, this goes all the way back to the campaign, Rich.
I understand that.
People are not being informed by the city of things that are going on. The owners are knowing, but not the renters. And this town is fifty percent renters, and it's my contention that renters need to have the same respect as owners. And so therefore, the city, even though it's a big, uh, burden on you, just send it to the occupant of all these rental properties. Cause I really think it's unfair, you wind up with nobody here to talk to us, you know, we get nobody at these meetings, just pie.
Would, how hard would it be?
How would you, how would you identify it as a rental property?
Doesn't matter, just send it out to everybody within three hundred feet, doesn't matter if it's rental or not, rental owner, who cares?
Hang on, hang on just a minute. Um, your point's taken, so what Kristen's taking, make sure we all understand, is that sometimes, we don't even know, if you got a parcel, we don't know who the occupants are, it, we know it's a multifamily, but we aren't always sure how many units they are, how they're labeled, where the, where to get their address. If you're talking about a commercial space, that's even doubly so, because those, uh, shapes can move around. You can have a commercial property that could have twelve tenants or three, depending on how much, um, how many units they're occupying. So there's a challenge. Go ahead.
Sorry. Um, the tenants are notified by the signs that we place on the property for the public hearings. That's their notice.
Covers, covers that a little bit. How hard would it be to, um, differentiate properties where the site address and the owner's address, mailing address, are different? With your, with your software? With your, with your software?
It would be have, have to be done by hand.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But she just said that the inland portion, the renters are not getting.
Right.
The thing, and I'm, and the thing about the sign is, if I live three hundred feet away, I might not see the sign. Cause I drive in the other direction to get to work. I walk in the other direction to walk my dog. This is where the sign is nice and plus, you know, we, this goes back to last meeting, there's a couple of places where the signs were not there and I went by. So my feeling is the rental people, the occupants, whoever they are, need to be noticed within three hundred feet. And that's, that's just my feeling. It's been my feeling for the past eight years.
That's the motion. It's three hundred feet, um, owners and occupants. That's the motion before us. We're still in discussion. Um, I know there's software where you can send a batch to site addresses and send a batch to, um, to occupants, to the, you know, or to the owners at their mailing address. And that seemed like it'd be pretty easy tweak, but it wouldn't cover those multiple unit properties. So if you have a single family residence, they would get one, but if you have.
Like I have an EDU on my property, so there's.
Right.
Multiple people that live on my.
Right.
So I could see that that could be an issue, but it seems to me that the post office knows, cause they have listed in my actual rule box, the names that are in there. So it seems like that information has to be somewhere. How many times a year would, would, is this, would this, would this come up? How many times do you, like on average, are you having to notify?
It would have happened three times for tonight's meeting. So it's every time, every time there's a public hearing.
I think, Joe, I, I'm sympathetic to, I'm very sympathetic to your thoughts. I mean, I, I really am. I think what I would prefer to do is not approve this text change here. And instead kick that to staff and have you guys come back with a, a report at a later meeting to figure out how we can accomplish that goal.
Can there be discussion about where the notices get placed? So like in an apartment building, it gets placed by the mailboxes or something to that nature where you know that everyone there would gather, no?
We don't have access to a lot of the mailboxes because they're inside locked doors.
Okay.
And that would then require us to go out to every location and actually post it.
Who posts them now?
We post the signs.
Right.
But only in front of the one property.
Right.
What did you mean, what did you mean you'd have to go out and post it?
Well, I think Commissioner Mayor was saying that, um, having the notice posted at the, by the mailboxes in apartment buildings and that kind of thing. We staff would have to actually go out and make that posting.
But you just said you make, you're the ones that post the notices anyway. Oh, 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 you mean, okay, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
You're talking about posting extra notices on neighboring properties.
Right. And sometimes we actually have to have the property owner or the agent do the posting of the sign for us. Because, um, lots of times there is no place for us to put the sign, so we have to ask them to put it inside.
And that's another thing too. The signs are, seem like they're shrinking. The one for the building down here on Fifth Street is so small, you can barely see it. And it's on Fifth Street, uh, so I, you, you need to make those signs bigger.
Any other discussion on this particular motion? Takes three of us to pass it. So let's go ahead and vote on this one and then move on and, and, uh, alright, so all those in favor of this one say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed say no?
No.
That's one yes, three no's. This particular one fails. Um, however, I, I would like, and maybe at the end we can come back and, and, um, talk about figuring out a way that we can do this. Because I, I agree with you. I think it's important. Anything else on, um, page eight? Anything else on page eight? I appreciate you, um, I thought the same item. I mean, I thought you did a great job of, of tweaking that to make it effective, so. Also, I thought a four twelve dash two, adding the table was, like, why did we think of that before? Oh my goodness, it's gonna make it way easier. Anything on page nine? Could you talk about, uh, four sixteen dash two, revising the process that allowed city staff and council to appeal decisions instead of requiring city staff to be an aggrieved person? Can you explain that one? I, I think I understand, but. It's four sixteen dash two.
So the way the code is currently written, a city staff member or a department can't actually appeal an action by a board or a commission. They have to do it more as a private person. And, um, s- staff believes that we need to retain the ability to appeal as necessary. It doesn't happen very often that staff appeals an action by a board or commission. Um, but it has happened before and so we just wanna retain that ability to do that.
That's okay.
Without having to be a private person filing an appeal.
Can you give us an example? Doesn't happen often?
When, um, the Historic Preservation Commission was looking at the house on California Street that fell off the foundation. The, um, application came from the City of Eureka to actually allow demolition of that house as, as one of the tools in the toolbox for getting, um, uh, code abatement on the property. And, um, the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, denied the application. And so staff appealed it to the city council and the city council did approve it.
So would this section apply only to items where the city is a party?
No. It doesn't happen very often that boards and commissions kinda go off the rails, so to speak. Um, but a- again, for those situations where that might happen in the future.
That's, I mean, that's the part that makes me a little nervous and that, um, you know, philosophically, I appreciate you guys, really do. But y'all are public servants. We're not. We're public representatives. So I'm thinking if something came up and we made a decision that we felt like was in the appropriate, you know, was the appropriate thing and Rob didn't like it, the fact that he can appeal, well, I love you, Rob, but you work for us. You know, so it makes me a little nervous. If the city were a party, that makes perfect sense to me, but.
But the appeal goes, I'm sorry, the appeal goes to the city council, so it's up to them.
Right.
To determine whether or not the commission or staff.
Right.
But also this is certain city staff. I, I have in my notes, it's just the director and the chief building officer is that we're talking about. So it's not just any staff person.
Correct.
And, and, or two council people, uh, who are in agreement to appeal. Okay.
Correct.
See, that's, and I think I would like to propose that we add for the two, for the staff when staff is a party. The two council people as representatives of the people, I'm fine with them having the appeal. Cause there's lots of things that we say yes to that they say no to, you know, or vice versa, and that's, I think, appropriate. But to have a staff member say, I don't like the decision the planning commission made. You know, I'm gonna appeal that to the city council when the staff member is not, when the city's not a party to it. Um, that would, I think that's inappropriate. So that, does my motion make sense? So.
Says essentially, so you're saying you don't want that?
Can't wear my mask and my glasses at the same time. So I'm gonna, I'm, I'm proposing, I'm moving that we allow the director or chief building officer to appeal a decision of a public board or commission. If the city is a party, any two council members can appeal any decision by a board. Whether or not they're a party, something along those lines. I'd ask you guys to wordsmith that.
I'd second that.
There's a second. Okay, so basically, you, you got it, Kristen? You help her out? Basically, I, I don't think a staff member should have the right to appeal unless the city's a party to it. Discussion, thoughts, ideas?
So that the director and the, um.
It's a fine point.
Building official can only appeal decisions where the city is a party to it.
Right, right. So what I'm, what I'm proposing is that the planning director or the chief building person, they can only appeal a decision of a board if the city's a party to that. If, if they're one of the ones making the application. But if, uh, if the planning director or the building, uh, you know, chief building officer, if they go, I don't like that decision that the Historic Preservation Committee made, I think that was the wrong decision. So I don't think that's staff's position. City council, yes, but does that make sense? That's the, the difference I, I see. Any other discussion? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor of that say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say nay? The ayes have it. Anything else on page nine? How about page ten? Five oh four dash one, Kristen, that alphabetical list of land use classifications, another. Like, wh- what were we thinking of? My goodness, that's a brilliant idea. Give somebody a raise. Anything else on page ten? Page eleven is really short. And that has taken us through the summary. Are we ready to? Ready to vote? We probably ought to start with the motion again, cause I don't think we did a motion last time. I think we were just discussing. I think we were still at the staff. Um, I think we need to do the public hearing too. So we'll open a public hearing, let the record show the public has not come into the building. So we'll close the public hearing. And then return the item to. Okay, well, we had another one tonight. There, we, we are, we are covered. Alright. Do we, do we have a motion? Motion, I will move that we adopt these, uh, that this, uh, a move that we adopt. I move the planning commission adopt a resolution making the findings required to approve a text amendment. And I further move we forward a recommendation to the city council to adopt the proposed June twenty twenty zoning code updates with the changes noted from last meeting and this meeting. So help me God.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Anybody opposed, say no? Yeses have it. Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Now, next item on our agenda. Go to lick my fingers when my mask is in the way, Jessica. That's all our public hearings. There is no old or new business reports and communications. Does a director or staff member have a report they wanna give to us? No, no, no. Do we have reports and communications we wanna give to them? What are they? Joe, go. I got a question. Uh, it's been in the news that the city wants to build multifamily properties on city property. So of course that was part of our housing element, I think. Um, can you give us an update about where that is?
So there's, there's an RFP that went out on Friday to a hundred and thirty plus developers. Um, the first three city-owned properties that we're looking at, um, developing are the ones at Sunny and Myrtle Avenue, the one at Sixth and M Streets. So just right over here, other side of the building across the street, and Eighth and G Streets. Near number eight and G Street, near, um, between Eureka Inn and the old, um, historic building next to McCray Nissan. So those are the three that are out right now. Um, three additional ones will go out next year under another RFP process. So, uh, I believe that the timeline has responses going and recommendations going to city council in October.
So now the RFP includes the things we would like to see on the property, right?
Yeah, there are minimum, um, floor areas and minimum number of units. Every lot has to have at least twenty low income units. Um, there's fifteen low and five very low that are required. Of course, they're encouraged to do more than that. Um, they're encouraged to do mixed use. Um, there was a, uh, public hearing at the last council meeting, um, regarding, uh, removing parking or reducing parking on the existing parking lots. And council was supportive of allowing the developer to make that decision in their, uh, in their seminal, in their response.
I would, um, I was under the impression that before those RFPs went out, they would come to us for discussion. Um, I think that would be a wise thing to do. Um, these are issues that I think, you know, we're kinda used to dealing with. I would hate for a proposal to come forward and then come, you know, after they put the work in to design it and then it comes and, and we go, eh, mark this, change that, stop this, you know, whatever. Um, I, I think it might be very, very helpful to bring the RFP initially to us. You know, to get some sense of what we've heard from our constituents. Um, and then include that in the RFP. What do you guys think of that? What does staff think of that? Is there a reason we can't do that? Is there something in the RFP process that makes that a illegal?
It's not illegal, it's not normal. Um, it's council who, uh, puts out the RFPs, so.
Right. Did council tell you not to talk to us first?
No.
So you, you could. I mean, that.
Well, and, uh, just to add, uh, most of what we're, I, I, actually I believe everything that's in the RFP is also, um, it's already within the zoning code. We're not.
Yeah.
We're not introducing anything new or, uh, different that, uh, any other person couldn't come in and buy a lot and, and build.
Right.
So, uh, I think that's, that's also just part of the kinda decision-making process as to where it went. So when it comes back in, uh, as we have projects, you know, they'll have to go through designer review to make sure that they do adhere to the, um, uh, requirements there. And if there was something that required additional approval from this body, we would obviously.
Sure.
You know, have discussions here. Um, but the, I think the big thing, and this was a big part of the discussion that we had with council uh, last week, was, you know, the, the narrower we make it, the more things that we add on the front end.
Right.
You know, ostensibly the less response we get, so, uh, as, as far as a, uh, methodology of, you know, putting forth our, our housing element, this was kinda out there a little bit. You know, we're, we're pretty on the edge of what people are doing right now. And so we just wanted to make sure that when we took this shot, we had the best shot we could at getting responses back. And so, uh, that's why, you know, we're open as far as, uh, purchase or lease. We're open as far as if there should be parking or not, uh, so that can be proposed to us as opposed to us just taking it out of contention, right, uh, on the front end.
Right.
And, uh, like, uh, Kristen had mentioned earlier, uh, we're also trying to aggressively promote this. So, uh, there's a state law that requires HCD to collect information on developers that want to build this kinda project. Uh, so we've put together a, a packet that we're mailing to, uh, all of them that are on that state list willing to work in this part of the state. And so, uh, Jessica, she's actually printed that for us. And so that, those will be landing on desks, uh, throughout California shortly. Uh, so let them know that we have this really unique opportunity to build, uh, these, uh, hopefully really cool, uh, you know, mixed use, uh, projects that have affordable components to them.
What you're saying is that the RFP was substantially similar to the presentation that we had on what you guys were planning on doing, essentially.
Correct. Yeah, and, uh, if, if you read the, the RFP, there's a really significant component just about zoning, like development standards. So a lot of times our RFPs are, you know, five, six, ten pages long. This one's forty-five pages with another hundred and fifty pages of attachments. Like, you know, we went really deep on this one to make it as thorough and complete as possible.
Yeah. Can, uh, you speak into your mic?
Brilliant plan and that was a brilliant response. What you're saying is, you know, trying to get as many people as you can on board to do this. And, and you guys did such a thorough presentation and, and had thought it through so well, I think it. And, and you guys did such a thorough presentation and, and had thought it through so well, I think it, you guys, it was commendable.
I, I, I agree, I think it's, I, I agree with everything you said. I still think, for, for what's, I'm curious what, what other folks think, um, if for noth- another reason, if for no other reason, um, you know, I had people coming up to me asking me, hey, what's this about? You're on the planning commission, and I said, uh, well, I think it's kind of, you, you know, I, I would, I think, um, and if nothing else, some of us are kind of cantankerous, you might have noticed that. And if we knew ahead of time before the RFP went out, this is our goal, when the proposals come back in, we might have some buy-in, I don't know. I think it would be wise in the future to bring something that big, you know, at least let us know you're doing it and tell us what you're thinking, you know, beforehand.
Understood.
For what, for whatever that's worth. Any others, it's, am I, am I the lone nut up here singing to the moon?
It seemed pretty clear to me when we went through it before that that was what was gonna happen. But I was surprised to see it because I didn't know that had gone to council, but I was excited to see that it got approved.
And, and I'm sorry, I don't think we want to hear what you just said, but go ahead, say it again. Something?
No, no, it's not like you said, I, I, I think it was a good presentation before when, um, um, uh, what's his name? Gave it to us and said what, you know, you guys are thinking of doing on the parking lots and essentially that's what you're sending out. So it was, I forget what that was, when did, when did he give, that was his last meeting, wasn't it?
Yep.
Kind of already forgot his name, sorry.
Uh, Brian.
Brian, that's right, yeah, when he gave that presentation to us, so that, that was, that was, he, he covered most of it there, that's good.
Reports and communications, anything else? Do we, are there enough of a, are there enough of us that would like to ask staff to, um, explore? Let, I'd, um, explore notifying tenants as well as owners and bring that back to us at a later date? Is that okay, can y'all, you know, as you have time, sometime in the next month or two or three, figure out a, kind of, put some thinking on that and figure, let's figure out a workaround? Any other reports or communications? Alright, next item is adjournment, um, you guys, I do want to emphasize, you guys do a great job. It, it's a, it's a, it's a nice team to have experts that understand the law and, um, the code and all that stuff. And to have, uh, free thinkers, shall we say, uh, thinking outside the box about, you know, what folks in the community are, are saying and stuff, so appreciate everybody. With that, we can adjourn, any objections? We are adjourned.